I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's not on, no. They don't come on simultaneously though, right?
Well, usually mine's on. Mine's not on. It says recording, and sometimes it keeps on.
Thanks, Amy. It certainly has been a zep for morning.
Is that bad or good?
I guess all resolveable. Does anyone know who Anthony Colari?
No.
From City of Kent?
We're on. We did the pledge. You want to hold that chair, Kathleen?
No, okay. No, I can give it, Kathleen, thank you. Did we, did you do the consent agenda?
No.
Is there any changes to the consent agenda? Anything taken off to discuss?
Yes. Under the HR, I'd like to pull the HR consent agenda and also number eight from the internal services consent agenda.
What, okay, I read the agenda, but what is, did you say on the internal services agenda?
I would like to pull the HR consent agenda, and I would like to pull number eight from the internal services consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion then?
To make a motion that we approve the remaining items on the consent agenda for H12.
Any further discussion? It's not local.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
We will adjourn these county commissioners and you can deem as all of these commissioners. Bill, let me get your stuff.
All right.
And I didn't.
That's that important one, it's always on top.
Now, do we do the consent agenda in this one, in this?
This is different, because we're different commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the consent agenda for solid waste, I'd like to pull numbers D, E, and F.
A second? Oh, I have a second.
Okay, all right, so we will pull for discussion.
And I make a motion then that we approve the remaining items on the consent agenda for solid waste.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's not local.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. Okay. All right. Surely. Shall I go over the consent agenda? I have questions about. Yeah, on number D, I think that's the first grant I am, yeah. In the, in section one under resolve, it said that the purpose is to, the total project cost is 336, 690, 92, to implement said program for the time period of July 1st through June 20th, and I didn't understand this because I thought the, I thought this resolution was to acquire a truck.
No, this is just to accept the grant. We don't, we cannot do, the way the Ohio EPA grants are set up, the time period is from July 1st through June 30th of the following year. This is just acknowledging that we've received the grant. I will come back in later, I will come back in probably the first week in June to do the official purchase of the truck.
Let me tell you why it was confusing, reading the title. It says, "Accept a Grant Award on behalf of Portage County Solid Waste Management District from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the grant for the purchase of a new automated commercial front load truck."
Right, that's, that's what we put the grant under, so the next time we can just strike after grant, the second community grant for the purchase.
Say that again.
After, where it says 2016 community grant, we can strike for the purchase the next time.
Well, I would still have to know what you're purchasing with it though, because you started off accepting a grant.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You're accepting a grant.
That's right. Under the second whereas, it indicates that it's for the purchase of a truck. I'm trying to understand, I don't have any quarrel doing it.
No, that's fine.
I just want to understand what's going on, because with this grant, you're going to be keeping the truck for your use, right?
Yes.
Or is it for someone else?
No, this, this one is for the district's use.
And so when you say for total project cost, to implement said program for the time period of July 1st through June 30th, does that mean that you're going to have track only during that period of time?
No, that, that we have, the base, they, they give you a year because they realize that you can, the way, the way they run their grants is, we've accept, we've accept, we've got the grant now, but we cannot purchase anything until July, July 1st, because on the 30th of July, I have to go down and pick up the signed contract by the director of the EPA, and then I also pick up the first half of the, of the grant to check.
So what you're really saying, I think, is that instead of saying to implement said program for this period of July 1st, you could say perhaps, if I'm understanding it correctly, to purchase the truck, whatever.
Yes, to purchase the truck.
To purchase the truck for, during the time period of July 1st through.
Right.
Could we do that?
That's, that's fine, because if, if you do anything prior to having that July 1st, that negates the grant. They will ask for the money back.
When I reprogram, I think there's something other than purchasing a truck, and I think what I'm hearing you say today is you're only purchasing a truck.
Yes.
Okay.
But I won't, I won't do that until after July.
So you could leave it up here, you could leave it as you have it in the title?
Mm-hmm.
If we could change just to, instead of saying to implement said program for the time period, you could indicate to purchase the truck, whatever, you know, naming the truck.
Right.
During the period of July 1st through June 30th, would that do it?
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, because they realize that if you order a truck, most of our trucks are six months out because they're, they're built to your specifications, so that's why you have a year.
Okay, so if we could change it that way, then I would like to make a motion that we accept a grant award on behalf of the Portage County Solid Waste Management District from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the 2016 community grant for the purchase of a new automated commercial front load truck.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. And then on the next one, I was confused by, probably the same kind of thing.
Right.
I think this is just simply purchasing a truck for Habitat for Humanity, and we're the pass-through.
Yes, ma'am.
So when, so the title then is correct.
Mm-hmm.
I think maybe it should say in the title for Habitat. On behalf or before, for, I don't know, it's in the, it's in the body, so I don't think we need to change it. But under the resolve, it says, "With the matching funds will be provided from Habitat for Humanity for a total project cost of $46,500." It's, again, it says to implement said program for the time periods, could we do the same change with this one?
Sure.
For the purchase of a truck during the period of July 1st through June 30th?
You know, there is something that is said about the period of time a grant is given, and I think that's what you're applying to do.
Yeah, I just.
It's indicate the, that particular grant covers a period of time, that is, the program project.
Right.
Quote, unquote, program project, is the purchase of a truck.
Right, yeah, we, we have, they give us a year, but I, when it comes to the purchase of a truck, I try to close it out as quickly as I can.
Understood. So we leave the dates in, of course?
Yes.
Just put, "To purchase the truck during the period of July 1st through June 30th."
That's fine, yep, that's fine.
That does it? Okay. I make a motion to accept a grant award on behalf of the Portage County Solid Waste Management District from the Ohio EPA for the 2016 community development grant for the purchase of a new lift gate truck.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. You're just racking up those trucks.
This one's for Habitat.
That's, this actually, just so the board knows, this is the second truck that we've got for Habitat, and I'm trying to think. This makes the sixth truck that we've acquired through grants, including the two for Habitat. I got a front load from the Dirge Grant, a roll-off truck from EPA, this truck that I will discuss here shortly, and then, yeah, I've, I've not done, I've not done that. I'll just leave it at that.
You're just racking up trucking.
Yes, yes. And I have possibly another one on the horizon.
All right. On this last resolution, did you check with Todd about whether or not we can reinstate a fund that's already been?
Yes, this actually came from Todd's department.
Okay.
I work with Karen Garman on the grant, and while we were reviewing the resolutions and paperwork for it today, we kind of caught that we need to rename this grant because we no longer get them from the ODNR, they're actually from the Ohio EPA, so.
But it's the same.
It's the same fund, but we just, we just want to avoid a potential audit issue, hey, why this, why that.
And the auditor also, I assume, has approved it?
I, I would have to check with Karen, but I, knowing Karen, it's probably all locked in. There's never a doubt in my mind.
All right, if Karen is involved, it's, it's approved by the.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion to reopen and rename Fund 8349 from Solid Waste ODNR pass-through, Community Development 2, SW Solid Waste, Ohio EPA pass-through, and then in frac is it COMMD.
For Community Development, right.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
All right, Touch a Truck. We are going to participate in Touch a Truck at Maplewood this Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00. And what I decided to do was take the two newest trucks, and I apologize, I must have left the third copy on my desk, but that is also, that is the truck that we received from the Ohio EPA, so I'm going to take two, the two different styles of new trucks out there. Kelsey is going to be out there, I'll probably pop in at some point during the afternoon. But there's a couple of things that I want to point out, especially with this truck. I think for the residents that do attend, if you'll notice on the side of the truck, it states that we received $200,000 grant. I think it's important to show the people that use our services that we can bring money back in to the county, to the district, to help implement the program. And with that truck, generally, when we, when we write grants at the district, we always make sure that we publicize the fact where the money came from. And I think Kelsey is going to put that on the website, but I also have invited Chet Chaney from the Ohio EPA, who is the grants administrator, for a photo op. So what I would like to do is have Deb work with Chet, because.
Deb and Chet?
Deb and Chet, yes, because I'm not going to try to tackle your three schedules on by myself, but I'd like to arrange that and then.
Peter, Bill, this is your information.
Let Mike know to do a photo op with that, and then probably do the same when we get the two trucks that we approved today, so.
Tell me again what Touch a Truck is.
You just bring different types of trucks up there. Brimfield Elementary did this the one day, they had police cruisers up there, fire trucks.
Where is it going to be?
Maplewood, at the parking lot.
Okay, sorry.
And, no, that's okay. And it's, it's really, it's just fun to see the kids. You know, we, we don't allow them in the truck because we don't want to start the truck and have the windshield wipers on and things like that. Plus, it's a safety thing.
Or the arm could hurt somebody.
Right, right, yeah, exactly, yeah. We definitely want to avoid that one.
Right, yeah, we want to avoid.
But it's, it's just a good way for them to get to know the district.
Sure.
You know, I thought about maybe taking one of the rusty red ones out there and say, "This is what we had."
Oh, before and after.
Yeah, but they're all headed to auction between today and tomorrow. The only other thing that I have is.
Phil, excuse me for.
Sure.
No, that's okay. I really do need to get one before the picture disappears. I was wondering if you might take that picture Saturday night?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, because when you're.
Give one back?
Yeah.
Well, I've got, here's, I know what you want to do Saturday night. I printed 20 of those things that I gave you.
Oh, oh.
And I'll just put this on the packet, and I'll just bring it with me, and I'll hand it off to you.
All right, and if you want to talk to a desk on.
I would prefer not, because I'll let you, I'll let you handle it, I'll just sit in the corner and.
He's got a recliner, though.
Yeah, I've requested for Mickey Stafford, recliner with an ottoman. I doubt if it's going to happen.
Is there a foundry thing?
No, 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 it's Mickey's, it's Mickey's building, I've always told him, I'm very envious of his garage. Yeah, it is.
He keeps it up very well.
Yes.
No, I'll be, I'll make sure then I get one in there, so I'll, a puke guard.
Well, what I'll do is when, when you show up, I'll just make sure I walk them over to you.
Oh, that's, um.
Okay. The only other thing that I have, and just mainly for discussion, is every year JFS has the Summer Youth Program that I'm going to probably contact them about, see if we just can't get somebody in the office to help with the phones, things like that. I just have to dot the i's and cross the t's with that, and I'll probably bring it back. I will be out of the office the last full week of the month, so if there's something on my agenda, I'll have Dawn bring it over, and then I need about a five-minute exec session at the very, very most.
Okay. Today, you're on the call.
Yes, yes.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
A second.
Any further discussion? I'm going into the session. We'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Do you want me to print more than just two of these, Maureen?
Want to make out?
Yes, we're ready.
A motion to exit the executive session.
Second.
Any further discussion on exiting? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Your action?
No, no action. Is it okay to ask about the human resources?
Of course.
Okay, on, on the consent agenda for today, there is two applicants for part-time, or I mean seasonal workers for a dock work. I noticed on both of the applications, they weren't completely filled out, there's no work history at all, and nothing about their education, and I'm just wondering if, why that, why it's not filled out.
Well, the ones that can state student, right?
I'm sorry, Dan, I'm going to chance on the application, but then we have a dock, what if it's going to date McIntyre?
One of the.
Pardon? I did a drunk call.
Oh, we did not. A motion to adjourn solid waste.
Second.
We'll call.
Thanks, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Siki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy, for giving us some. Didn't think about, about it at all.
Stick like that in them out.
Actually, that, I will have to, and I apologize, I, I will have to go back and ask.
I mean, we can go ahead and prove, I don't have any quarrel at all, we're proving it, but I think it's important for them to fill it out, especially since when Dave was in here last time, he was insisting that it be either a high school education or a GED. And, and also work history, I think, is important.
Yeah, and I will get an answer from Dave McIntyre, maybe they, if they attached a resume, maybe I didn't get the resume when he brought these over to me, I don't know, but I, yeah, I would feel, even if they don't have any employment history, at least say non-applicable or something, so.
I thought they were students. You know, I think probably.
They're young, for sure. I think they, yeah, it looks like, well, this one, one applicant looks like he, he did graduate, the other one still looks like he's still attending, or possibly graduating this year.
Jenna, I suggest that you, like I suggested, Dave, that you make sure those are filled out prior to some.
And you know what, they actually come through my office, so I will, they, they go through Jenna, so that actually would be a good.
You know, she may have left they were students also, that's what I thought.
It doesn't matter, they should still fill it out.
Right, they should have something listed there. For example, I know for JFS, we are now going to review all the applications for JFS and let them, tell them if they're qualified or not qualified for the position, so perhaps we need to extend that beyond one department. But I, yeah, I, I apologize it in.
No, that's all right, I just, I just think it's important that we have them fill it out, even if they say high school student, no experience, I mean.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, we're speculating.
Yeah. See, I do know, if I would ever see anybody, you know, not sign an application, if they were coming in for an interview, I would give them the application, make them sign.
Yes, exactly.
But yeah, but that is, thank you for bringing that to our attention, because I will have, I'll ask them to do that.
I make a motion that we authorize the employment of the, do we have a resolution for that, or do we just do a journal?
Journal.
A journal training.
Yeah, these two.
Seasonal canvassers.
Yeah.
All right, we then have that, and we're out of executive session. So we're out of yet now.
Yeah, okay.
Board authorizes the hiring of the two.
I'm thinking of the JEs. I can't remember if I said.
Can you give me the particulars?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you, did you want a second?
Second?
Yeah. Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I'm coming back with Todd, but they vary.
I don't, is Joanne coming in? If not, we can talk about.
Deb, she's coming. Deb, can you keep a session?
Probably on her way as we speak. And then, again, maybe not. Let me refer to gender.
Joanne had. Yeah, that, but I mean, didn't she add, didn't she have a sheet, the sheet question?
She sent us, yeah, she sent us her comments concerning today's, I hope I have them, I don't know if I.
I did have them, but I think they're on my desk.
These are about the NDS, Dave Vaughn, the drug house, the inspector, the EPA inspector.
Was that Joanne's notes?
Thank you.
Those are very, very.
Oh, here it is.
Can we begin with the script, or? You know, you think I could find the information. All right, is it okay to begin with the script?
Number one is a request from NDS for a meeting about the house that's on Meridian Street. Brad Cromes is also involved, and is, is it a land bank issue as well? So the question is, you want us to schedule that meeting with the board? Okay.
Can I ask Ricky, because you're land bank, is it something that could not be included by the land bank funds? Is that why we're asking?
They're asking us if we're interested in acquiring the property that's going to be taken.
They want to know if we want to take the property.
Right, they want to know what action we wanted to do as the county. Did we want to acquire that property? You know, or we just.
Oh, I see.
The land bank can take it down and everything, but do we want that property because it's adjacent to the admin building? I mean, I don't know.
Can we get it for nothing, because we're a county, we're.
Well, part of the proposal is that, I don't know, is that they have, the Taxis has taken on certain costs, and they have a loss, and it's like $6,000 of their loss. And so when they come in, they'll tell us what the, what the proposals are, and then we can decide. Joanne, in her first comment for today's agenda, indicates she thinks that we should probably consider.
Well, that money that Taxis paid, though, I think the treasurer's office could probably, because they paid that to the treasurer's office.
Right, they could waive it, or, I mean, whatever.
Well, they'd give it back, they'd refund it, because they've done that before.
Right, right, yeah, so.
But then there's taxes also of $2,000 something.
For this year, it would be taxes of $2,000 something, I think. So it would be a bargain for us, and Joanne is recommending that we consider doing it, so I guess the point is that we should have the meeting.
And you want.
Oh, yeah, there's no question, I just wanted clarification.
You want to know what you expect?
Yes, right, right.
So you want NDS there, Brad Cromes, Dave Vaughn, Frank Samino, it was a recommendation by Brad, is that who you want there?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm looking to acquire it, but the county not spend any money. And I think there's, there's a motion that would, that would accommodate that, but that's why I have a meeting.
Okay. All right. Number two, is it the request from Brimfield Township for the senior citizens home?
Yes.
What is the farmer, is that someone's last name, Farmer Kylos, or what, what does that mean?
I think that is.
Someone's last name?
I think somebody donated a house.
I talked very briefly last night with Dick Messner from Brimfield Township. As you know, Mike Katinsky had called me and wanted to have a meeting with him, which I assured him would be happy to do, and let him know that I didn't know the time that Gene Roberts was coming on board, so that I would think it would be best to wait till Gene, and then Tia also could run this. However, then yesterday I read the letter.
And that one line got you, didn't it?
Yes, the one line got me. Yeah, Mike did not share that about.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I was in my office alone, I went, huh!
But anyway, certainly, how do you want to proceed with it?
How do we refer to the water resource for their comment, information?
Well, again, I've already committed to Mike Katinsky and to John.
To come in and talk with us.
Right, we would have a meeting, and I'll follow through on that. So as I just said, I wanted him to wait till Gene Roberts came on board.
But I think if we have a meeting or refer it to water resources, we'd get information as to whether or not it's possible.
Oh, yeah.
And what the cost would be.
Yes, I'm sure, right, you're right, but it is possible, but.
When we do meet with them, then we'll have information as to whether or not we can.
Because they have two things, so schedule a meeting out a couple of weeks, and then give us to Mr. Roberts and have him investigate.
Yeah, I will give him some time.
So we hear from the water resource prior to the meeting, because we don't know what it will cost, we don't know whether it's even possible.
Okay. Well, I think it's possible, it sort of goes the street, but you're, it's done, it's called.
Well, I heard somewhere, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, but I heard that it's, if it's a main line, what do you call the main line?
The trunk line?
The trunk, if it's a trunk line, you can't tap in individual households into a trunk line.
It has to be all, all.
That has to be the whole thing?
Whole thing.
Well, I would assume if, if that's correct.
Under pressure, you could tap in.
It would, you couldn't do it, but you could have a tap-in to the trunk line that would go to service other people.
I see.
Yeah. But it's still at, across, but, okay, so we will proceed with that.
Number three is a request from Mental Health Recovery Board that the board put Number three is a request from Mental Health Recovery Board that the board put a replacement levy on the ballot. You really can't move forward until you get the certification from the auditor, because that goes with this piece to the question.
And then you'll bring back a resolution?
Well, the prosecutor will write you a resolution for you. Once we get the certification, the board can see this again, we'll bring back both pieces, you have a little bit of time, yeah. So you could acknowledge receipt of it today, just so that it's on your books?
Yes.
A journal entry, and then we'll bring it back soon as Janet sends up, yeah, right. And number four, Maureen, was an email from Mary Greer about solar energy.
Yes, I responded to it, I'm sure you're both now up to speed and read of it, but she was very impressed with the program at Bowling Green. And I suggested she give us some specific information, and I also asked Deb to go ahead and talk to CCAO media and some surrounding companies, I think I did.
I didn't do anything yet, we just have it here.
No, no, but I mean, we talked about, maybe by email, I just asked to get some additional information for us.
Does that mean you want to proceed?
Sure, I like the idea, what is the CCAO, you're going to get information from them?
I just thought there may be some other entities that are doing this, where they have, some of that.
With the university.
Right, with the university particularly, someone that donated a field, and then they put up this.
Could we also ask, when you contact CCAO, how many people have joined the solar energy program that they had proposed earlier? Because at the time, there were only a couple of counties.
I indicated that to Mary, not that there was only a couple at the time, but that we had made a presentation, so not tell me what she was having to offer. I don't have any way that we would further consider it, so. Okay, referred items, this, I guess, we don't even talk about this, the lawsuit? No, it's been referred.
Right.
Oh, from the city of Kent, the request that they, they're going to let me see the bed tax.
This letter really was to the county, and I'm sure that they'll follow up on it. I was curious as to whether or not they're allowed just to drop out, if they were part of the foundation of the county convention and visitor's area. But I'm sure they'll follow up on that, I don't know that we need to do anything.
No, I, I, there's just information. Okay, any questions, concerns, whatever, and how are you doing?
Do you have a, please ask?
Under, oh, that's right, I hope I have it, under Joanne's comments concerning the apiary inspector.
That's not the prosecutor.
She said, I don't know what I do with my, add to my, it's probably on my desk.
It's getting up.
Oh, thank you. Under the apiary, she said that we could make it a condition of employment that the apiary inspector provide his own tools.
And you want that to include any safety equipment, don't you?
No, I don't, I don't think, Denise answered that safety equipment, she said we were responsible.
She did, and it was based on the law that was given to us by Michelle, and the law that I read, unless there's more to it, it just says that they have to ensure that they have safety equipment, it doesn't say we have to pay for it.
Well, again, I think, as we talked about, the safety.
Didn't appreciate.
P one, is it?
I think we could at least provide.
I know, I read it.
Yeah, I think she says.
She didn't say it.
So, are we wanting to go against what Denise says, or?
Well, I'd like clarification, maybe I'll call Denise, because it doesn't really say in the law that we have to pay for it, it just says that we have to assure that.
We have to provide it, doesn't it say that, Deb?
Either purchase, the equipment are set, the county can purchase it, or lease the items from a third party, or from the employee himself.
As Denise is ruling, but turn to the part where it talks about, where it talks, it quotes the law, we have the law.
It's just like the water resources vest, and the police, I would think, I mean, we provide that stuff if they need it.
You know, it would be my opinion, I'm going to voice it again, that he's doing a very necessary service, and I would think it would be something we'd want to do, provide him some protective, I guess clothing, whatever it is that they wear, and incur the cost.
He already has the equipment.
I'm not talking about the equipment or whatever that is. I'm talking about, we do it with the sheriff's deputies on the vests, of course, that's part of the union agreement, but we're concerned about our employees and executives.
You have what Michelle said.
It's in P one, you have it, your packet, your P one packet, your prosecutor's packet? So, you have the emails there, keep going, Kathleen, it's right there on your, in your left hand, back there.
As the employer of the workers, the board is required to provide him per all safety equipment.
That's from Michelle or Denise.
Denise.
That's Denise, the revised code, which is under Michelle's.
So I'm accepting Michelle's opinion over Denise's.
No, no, I'm reading from the Ohio Revised Code, what it actually says.
I don't think we need to be forced to do that, though, Kathleen.
Am I allowed to say anything here?
You've said it over and over, though.
I would just like to make the point that the code says one thing, and the other people aren't making an interpretation of that.
Okay, so noted that the code indicates one thing.
Put it under the general duty clause.
All right, here, I'd like to read it for the record. The Ohio Revised Code states that it is responsibility of every employer in Ohio to provide a safe workplace and adhere to all safety rules. Likewise, it is the responsibility of every Ohio worker to properly use the equipment, et cetera. Furthermore, under general duty clause, it says of the Occupational Safety and Health Act, that's OSHA from the federal government of nineteen seventy, employees are required to provide their employees with a place of employment that is free from recognizable hazards and that are causing or likely to cause death or serious harm to employees. The court says interpreted OSHA's general duty clause to mean that an employer has a legal obligation to provide a workplace free of conditions or activities that either the employer or industry recognizes as hazardous and that cause, or are likely to cause death or serious physical harm to employees when there is a feasible method to abate the hazard. Joanne suggests in that to us that we can make it a condition of employment, that he provide his own tools and safety equipment, other things. So, the law is requiring that we provide a safe, make sure there's a safe environment. It does not say that the county has to pay for that, it makes sure that we have.
But if we provide it, doesn't that mean we have to pay for it? What if he's at a B place or something, and he doesn't have the right stuff on him, and he gets stung, I mean, I don't know.
He's required to use it, if we make it a condition of employment, he's required to do that, anyway, I'm not going to argue about it anymore.
Understood, I, again, my opinion is that it would be.
I think we should provide him the safety equipment.
Beneficial for him, and I think, a very, I shouldn't say this, but I would imagine a very slight, I shouldn't say slight, it would be a reasonable cost to provide him with some protective clothing, if that's how, if that's what that is. Or give him an allowance, maybe.
He already has it, maybe we could just pay for it, I mean, he already has it, we shouldn't be buying.
If he needs to replace anything.
No, right, maybe we can talk about some form of an allowance, if we're, I think, I don't know, if we're doing that for other workers, and I would think we.
We do have a uniform, a lot, we're used to, I'm not sure.
Like for safety boots, if they're working it.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, so, last time you met with Janet and Dave and Todd, you asked them to meet with Mr. Comiskey, Mr. Alcon, so you want this on Janet's agenda on Thursday? On Tuesday for an update, maybe, where are they?
Well, we have an observation from Todd, do you want to talk about that, Todd, about the?
Oh, yes, he said.
It pertains to, it's, and given everything that, according to Denise's interpretation, and what she was telling us with Dave, having to pay him out of a separate fund, I would think the resolve of this would be to ask Todd to supervise this gentleman.
Make it as simple as possible.
As simple as possible, but, you know, you want to, hopefully you want to talk about that now, I don't know.
Yeah, on Todd's note, he indicates.
Did you see that?
I think he just, Amy just handed you a copy. Is it right there, it's right there to your right, that one?
Yeah, P one.
He says that he would have him come in and, is this the right one?
Yes, policies.
Yeah, he would have him come in and help write adequate policies, well, the policies are already in state law, so there's no need for him to write different, I mean, the policies are part of state law.
Well, I'm sure, but I don't know as though, it's like, they're in the code or wherever they are, I think it's always nice to have, and I think we've stressed this with our departments, some written for, maybe, and they have their personnel policies.
I think Todd's talking about use of the vehicle, how that's going to work, I don't think he's talking about apiary duties.
And he was talking about performance issues, in other words, some measurable standards.
Time clock. That, I think that's the policy that.
He says adequate policy regarding proper inspection and equipment cleaning techniques, I suspect that's all in state law. However, there are other things that he could, you know, like you indicated, his use of the car and all of that.
So, if Dave McIntyre is, is he out of the picture now, so you would want Todd and Janet, maybe, on Tuesday to come in with HR to talk about?
I would think so, unless, either both of you have an opinion with someone else, I just can't see it.
I don't have a problem with Dave doing it, but.
I'm not sure, but he needs two or three hours a week to do it.
Right, we would have to pay him out of a different fund for the job, and that just seems too convenient.
Todd does say that he would request a county-owned cellphone, I guess he's going to keep in contact.
He should have one anyway.
Yes, I thought he did, I thought everybody got that one, I mean, unless the drug owners, I don't know, he didn't want one, or, I don't know.
Okay, so Tuesday, agenda, Todd and Janet, is Dave coming too, or is he?
We need to tell him, I mean, we can, I wonder if it's just as a courtesy, like Dave.
Oh, sure, of course.
Yeah, just no real, and only because of charge.
Okay, HR agenda on Tuesday, got it, all right.
Is that okay?
Well, he can bring that back on Thursday for journal entry, we'll tell him it's okay for him to move forward with the cellphone, but come back to the board with the formal request? Okay, or do you want a journal entry today?
For the cellphone?
We can get a journal entry. Add it to, yeah.
For Todd?
We need a journal entry. You open?
All right, that's clean.
Maybe we're to long?
Are we prejudiced to be agenda, or what we're doing?
Yeah, okay, we're temporarily having with Kelly, or the Kelly's group.
Yes, you would actually enter into an agreement with Kelly Services and not with her.
I don't recall her name being Kelly.
Between twenty and thirty, depending on how.
I mean, until there's no conversion.
Oh, it's here, it's five hundred and twenty-one hours, there's no fee to convert.
Do we need a resolution?
Just a journal entry to move forward.
So we will, journal entry today, and I will move from, to Kelly Services.
Can we indicate the name of the individual?
I don't think that's necessary, because your contract's not with her, it's with Kelly Services.
But what if they send someone in?
Go away, but Joanne will process all of this.
We definitely want the person that.
So you know what, at thirty, at thirty hours, just to make it simple, she would only have to work a little over seventeen weeks.
To meet the conversion, if, in fact, this person would want to apply for a full-time job, right?
And if we wanted it, sure.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay.
It does, it's a plan.
Okay, number two, I just put this on, there's really no action for the board to take, but I did send Joel Mallory some information about a grant that was available, and this is his comments as to why he did not want to apply for the grant. And then number two is just about the advisory committee, so I thought that was interesting, that the board had talked about maybe gathering this committee together to do some things.
The way I put it's on there, staff, we didn't have a discussion, of course, we didn't have agreed anything. However, the more I think about this, the more compelling it becomes to me to ask that somehow we, we instinct that commit. Now, I understand there are some extraneous circumstances or costs, but I think we can well afford, if we need to even hire someone to do minutes, because it involves the public, and we have said to the public we would involve them, we give them every opportunity, and we established that committee, I don't know as though we did it wrongly, we established it and then found out some things, requirements upon us that we would have to do, and we decided, well, we don't necessarily want to do this. But I think it erodes or also lessens the, exactly what we have committed to do.
And you know more.
Without having a form, formalized means for them to get together with us and talk about these things.
And you know, yesterday, I know you got very emotional about that, but nobody was disagreeing with you, I just want to make sure, I mean, we all were on the same page, but.
I understand.
But I think we need, I mean, if we need to do minutes, whatever we need to do, I'm not against any of that, but I just, I just want us to go through Denise, because she is the one, the reason that we put a halt to it.
Right.
And I just want to make sure we go through the right steps to do whatever it is that we need to do.
You know, again, yesterday, as we discussed with staff about an evaluation tool, again, Todd's suggesting an excellent one, I think we need to be receptive to that, no matter what we're doing, and we have, we've often talked about it. But we do need an evaluated, a tool that we can actually use.
A criteria.
Right, record what's being done, and be able, I think, you know, he even talked about some categories.
Yes.
And all good points, because we are getting these requests in here almost on a weekly basis, and rather than, nothing wrong with dealing with the news, but but in my opinion, there is, I think.
But we need to have a whole-picture vision.
Yeah, of what's come in, and I think he even suggested maybe even monthly or quarterly, we would, we would fund certain projects, but, you know, just for us to put some, you know, say, standards on the process, so, anyway, that's what I would like to see us.
And I think our team is aware.
I restarted, I mean, I reached out to the clerks.
Reaching out to some other.
And there's some, just some samples in your sheriff file today of what other entities have done in evaluating grants and those sorts of things. So we're moving forward with that.
All right, that's good, and then, now, he wanted to have this meeting with the sheriff.
Isn't that, they'll call that meeting themselves?
And they can, I, it doesn't violate anything, I'd like to be present, I'd like to hear what it is they are proposing to the committee. But again, that gets me back on point, I would like us to see, I'd like us to have some structure, some, you know, formalized structure.
Without any violation of anything, right, whether you're just attending or not.
I don't know if it was in violation, it was as to how, I shouldn't say violation, as to what we would have to do to make it legal.
Let me pull Denise's emails, I'll pull all of her emails to refresh your memory as to what she said, then we'll give you this resolution, these two that I just gave you, put that back on for a discussion to see how you want to move forward, if you want to move forward, is that good?
Is that okay?
Sure. Okay, and number three, I wanted to get this before the board, in case you were planning to.
Yeah, I thought that had been.
That was a national, this is just for Ohio, and it's a one-dayer, right, so which commissioner would want to go, if any of you would?
What's June sixteenth look like on our calendar?
It's on the next page, I gave you the calendar, and we can, we, it's plenty of time, we can change some of those around, get them to a different date, is one page in? I'm sorry, on number three, or number?
By the time I find it, the seminar will have been concluded.
So we can either cancel the day if the board, if one of you will be out of the office and the other attends, or we can just kind of condense the day into a very brief housekeeping meeting.
You know, I wouldn't mind attending that, it's just a one day, I can come back the same day, right?
Right, I think it's eight to five, or nine to five. I think it's eight to five or nine to five.
We can fly you down with the county.
Jet. Airplane, helicopter, whatever.
Now, why did I say that? We don't have a county jet.
Yeah, you should... We should probably clarify that.
Refrain from those kind of things.
Would anyone else like to go? I mean, I don't want to be just...
I think it's going to be an ongoing process.
Oh, there's going to be like every...
Right. Next year, there'll be things going on because it's part of the stepping up program. And I think you're involved in the task as well. So, it's a good choice that you'd be willing to go.
Okay. So, I'll respond to Joel that Vicki will be going?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Good morning.
Morning. Let me find your jackets.
Number two, right? You've got a consent agenda and then...
Yeah. I brought the information. You wanted to hold item number eight on my consent agenda. So, I brought that with me for your questions or whatever.
There's a blue sheet for a little bit later.
I think number eight was the Portage Development Board Amendment, number two.
Yes.
On the consent agenda.
I'm looking at your number eight on the blue sheet.
No. On the consent agenda. I didn't know what you wanted to do first.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
It mentions it's an amendment to an original agreement or is this a third amendment?
This is the second amendment to their original agreement.
We don't know. It says all of the terms and conditions remain the same as the previous amendment. We don't have the previous amendment. Do you recall what they are? I mean...
From the original agreement?
Should we attach it to that? Did we approve it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
You did. And the only thing that's changed from the original is the amount of money that you pledged to them each year. Last year's was 20,000. This year was 50,000.
So, were there any conditions?
Nothing else changed. Absolutely nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I would like to make a motion that we enter into an amendment, number two, between the Portage County Board of Commissioners and the Portage County Development Board. Second, Portage Development Board, sorry.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. If we're back to give this to Dave, it's okay.
Okay. On the blue sheets?
Blue sheet.
Yes. The first item that changed for us is the Kent concrete was sealed. So, we're moving to finalization on that whole project. It's been a few years, so I'm glad that it's finally getting done. Number five, the Brady Lake property.
We should have a drum rule.
After talking with Denise, she has something that she wants to be able to talk to you guys about in her executive session because it could be pending or imminent litigation.
And number five?
Yes. So, I'm going to ask her... I'll send her an email after this to make sure she puts it on her agenda to talk to you folks about. But what she's explained to me seems like it's something that will work to get things done on this.
Should we take it off then?
I'll take it off mine and we'll move it over to hers, however that happens. Yeah. The next item I have is the Justice Center Women's Edition Project. The architects will be here next week again. This time, we are all hoping that we're going to have some finalization on the kind of layouts. And I'm hoping some possible construction costs so that we know where we're headed with this since it kind of took a little bit of a different turn. And we started looking at all areas within the jail that we'd be able to quit people.
Sure. Joanne, this is a digression, but seeing Dave and Terry here, would you want to go back up to Boarding Elections Office?
Yeah. There's... The only thing that's new there is after we talked last week on should we have the architect do temporary space and/or permanent space? And then we said, no, they need to set the program up for what's the permanent space to make sure that we can fit down there. And if we can't, then we need to move on to other things. Don't waste time and/or money on temporary space at this point. So, they went back. The architects are going back to redo their contract. I got it late yesterday afternoon and haven't even opened it up yet to read it to see if they've given us exactly what we're looking for. So, that's kind of the update on that piece.
You know, I want to make a statement and make sure we're all on the same page because it came up the other day that you were going to be moving before the general election. And that was not our understanding. So, you're right where you are for the general election. Okay. Well, see, that's what we thought.
Right.
But...
I was sure that you guys were, but then something else came up on which I...
Yeah. And definitely someone...
There's definitely a lot of rumors going around.
There are.
But no, it is our complete understanding that we will not be moving or making any changes, whatever those may be, until after the November presidential election.
And we said that we were going to help you guys with the lines of people and maybe put some benches and things like that or try to redirect people, help you do that kind of thing through this winter, you know, through the November. So, that still stands.
I understand someone went into the Board of Elections and cast dispersions on the commissioners for making an impotent move and moving you to the sixth.
And we haven't done that.
We had no intention of doing that. We did not do that.
Well, we may do it. We haven't even talked about it.
Not before. No, 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 no. That is what was supposedly conveyed.
Do you have any comments or maybe questions that you're maybe confused on that maybe has been discussed or...
We want to... We want to... I have quite a few.
There is quite a few. And I think once we're at that place where we are making decisions, and I don't believe those decisions are going to start to be made until the architects are signed on board, we sit down and have those meetings with them. You have meetings with them and so forth. But I think at that point, once we do have those meetings and they're giving suggestions, I think that's when we need to sit down, hopefully as a unit, and make those decisions as to what our next steps are. If there is a move, where that move may take place. If there's not, then why, you know... And put a plan together, together.
Right.
And hopefully, understanding that we're not trying to ask for more than what we need. But we also need to be able to conduct business appropriately, no matter what our future holds.
Right. But fake... I mean, your input is vital. I mean, it has to be. We just can't sit up here and say, well, we're going to do this.
Right.
And that's what's being said.
It all starts with that program with the architect.
That's not true.
Exactly.
I mean, and you're... I believe, I know that you are on board with that. And you are. I mean, this first step with the architect.
Oh, yeah.
That's acceptable, palatable.
Yes.
So, we just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Absolutely.
Clear up any questions.
Okay. The next one down then was 13 on the electric rates. NOPEC came back, met with Todd and I, and gave us some new rates on what they would be able to do, which are less than what they were before.
Surprising.
And I contacted... So, then I turned around and contacted the CCAO program and said, for the areas, the counties that you have done this for, what is the electric rate that you're able to give them right now? And he sent me some paperwork back, but that wasn't even in there. So, again, I asked him, can you just give me the kilowatt hour cost so that we can compare it? Because what NOPEC has sent in was much better than the first time they did. And Charlie indicated that right now, they're kind of in this low flux, but he expects at the, you know, like at the end of this month, beginning in June, they're going to go push forward again. So, in some respects, since NOPEC uses the same contractor or supplier, I should say, that I use for our buildings, I'm thinking that maybe we can... Maybe the best move might be to go with NOPEC and get our other buildings saving costs right now. I'd like to have them be able to put my buildings in at the cheaper rate because I'm paying a little bit more than what they showed to try, you know, to help us all. And then have that last, I think it's 35 months, not even 36, but they're calling it 35 months. Let us go through that period and then before we sign with anyone else or whatever, we might be able to go out and do the RFP. I say that this way and then looking to see what CCAO gives me back on that kilowatt hour. Because if they're not that comparable or whatever, I think it's a win-win maybe to go with the NOPEC at this point.
But you'll get that information.
And come back with you. Yes, absolutely. I'm excited because the cost was...
We're going to save money.
Yeah, exactly. That's the name of the game, right?
Competition.
Yeah.
Very prudent.
All right. The NOPEC Energy Grant. I have identified two projects at the Riddle Block. The grant is for $50,000. I have two projects, roofing and pointing and tucking cement up there or the bricks and things that are old and starting to come out. They're over the $50,000 grant amount by about $10,000, I think. But those would be two that we've talked to Charlie about. And he said those absolutely fit what the grant's asking for so that we would be able to put, turn that grant in and hopefully turn the money around right away. Microfilm part-time employee. The job is posted. And I think it comes down this week, so we'll be moving open on that. And then you had requested. I checked to see what rooms were open in the Riddle Block. And we have rooms 202 and 205. Originally, I think the judge's request was 203 and 205. Well, 202 and 203 are kind of combined. So... But yes, those two rooms are open so that you'll be able to move to the next step then.
So, can we do a journal entry to approve those two rooms for Lori Pittman's use?
We can, but I want to know from Judge Pittman more specifically what the cost would be for this program.
Yeah.
And she said, I think, there's some comparisons and they're doing this in Trumbull County.
Trumbull County was doing it. And then she was looking for, to work with Mark Rizone on this project. And he was going to have some funding. John Thomas was looking at some grant funding, but you don't know those pieces yet. This was just the first piece to say, yes, those rooms are available. So, when you get that other stuff decided, yeah.
We could do a contingent upon the...
Exactly. You approving the other funding or something.
But I just don't want any more surprises like that other grant.
Yeah.
I want to know what potentially those programs cost.
Sure. But those rooms are available. So, we do know that.
All right. So, we'll do that. Is that a minimum?
Yes.
Contingent upon finding out the specifics on the program and program cost from the judge.
And then I had one item that came up that I didn't put on the pending list because it's going to be a simple yes and no from you folks is adult probation is wanting to go to Cleveland on a training institute for their folks, August 28th to the 31st. They contacted the hotels that are providing this. They will not accept a county check. They wanted to know if they could use the commissioner's credit card to charge their rooms. And I wanted to just make sure that you had no problems with it. Yes. They have four of the people going. It's reimbursed from a grant and the others from their general fund amount. So, when the bill comes in, we will charge back their account lines.
Okay. We could do a journal entry?
Okay.
Certainly.
And I'll send you the language on that.
I know this isn't the sort of ask, but they'll be obviously very prudent with the use of that card.
It was just for the rooms is what they said. You know, like...
That's fine. Our journal entry will say just for the rooms.
Yeah. There you go. All right. And then now I have requests for executive session. Please.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for the... To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee official, licensee, or regulated individual.
Second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. You know, Joanne, I know this isn't necessary. There's no penalties for getting out of any contracts and we change electric...
Two journal entries.
Right. Two journal entries to...
One was for the hiring of a seasonal maintenance worker.
Yes. And Joanne knows who and...
And I'll give you that, Amy. And then the second one was the approval for adult probation to use the credit card for hotel stay.
My goodness, Lee. Do you think I can recall either of those things?
While you're here, could you tell us about yesterday's visit to the jail? Was the problem that the drains are too large and they're abusing it and that we need smaller holes?
Yes.
That's what you were saying.
The grates are probably eight and a half by 11 like this. And they have vertical channels in them. But the channels are probably this far apart. And I could see them putting all kinds of things down there. So, I took pictures of them. I think that our local guy, Chuck Brush from Brush Sheet Metal, can figure something out to put more, you know, lines in it, if you will, or whatever you want to call it, channels so that they can't put things down there.
I wondered then, I thought, gee, if you reduce it, is that going to cause backup problems or something?
Well, he said it has to be enough to where they can rent stuff down there because they have things sometimes.
Yeah. It can't be, you know, tiny. Yeah. I'm just, you know...
Yeah. I just thought we...
It really has to be almost bigger than a finger. But, you know, they're putting their fingers down on stuff and it's just terrible. I've never seen anything like it in my life of it.
No, there's just not appropriate solutions.
Well, it shows like there's some mental illness.
Very much so. And that's what... They keep coming back once they're out. And if they get some help from Kevin Coleman or whoever. And like the deputy that was saying, they take their medication for a while, then they're feeling better. And then they stop. And then all of a sudden, they're coming right back into the jail. It's a sad cyclical piece. So, yeah, that was my intent was to work to get something that we can...
So, you'll come back.
Yeah. Let you know that we've taken care of it.
If you don't need us, anything from us, just keep us informed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, and I saw your, or heard your thing about the APR inspector. And yes, I was only talking about his equipment.
The other hands.
Right, like his, you know, the smoker, that kind of stuff.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's what I meant by equipment, that we've made that a condition of employment before. All right, thanks.
Thank you. I think we're getting close to...
He's got the money shirt on.
That's right. Are you ready?
All right.
Did you have questions on the first resolution?
The general fund? Do you want to explain it because you sent us that?
This is the one, Juvenile Court.
Oh, yeah.
You know, Judge Berger, when he came in, I mean, in November, December during the budget hearings, indicated that their recording system is dead. They're piecing it together with bubble gum and paper clips. In fact, they've had a couple incidents this year where they almost lost. Might be a bit of an exaggeration, but yeah, they're piecing it together daily. They've had a couple incidents already this year where they had some scares that they may have lost some information. They had indicated back at that time that they were going to try for this grant and so we sort of put it off to see if they would get the grant. They did not get their grant. The recording equipment itself is a little over $59,000 and then there's two microfilm machines that are cost just over $18,000. Juvenile does their own records because of the, you know, the juvenile major. So they need around $80,000 to purchase all this equipment. It can't wait till next year, particularly the recording equipment. We had had that $50,000 for Judge Gilletteau's applications. The applications that we put that money towards were not approved, so that kind of freed up that money. So I'm proposing we take that 50 plus an extra 30 out of contingency, which we had kind of set aside realizing that we may not get the grant, and then put that towards the $80,000 that Juvenile needs so they can proceed with these purchases right now. And they got, because they submitted the grant, they have active quotes and everything, so now's a great time to just go ahead and proceed with it. And this resolution would allow them to proceed.
I make a motion to amend the general fund 2016 Annual Probation Resolution Number 15, Dad 1063, adopted December 15, 2015.
Second.
For discussion, I gave you the tax budget letter last week. I hadn't heard any revisions. Are you okay with it going out as it was? Okay, I will send that out.
Do we do a journal entry?
If you want to, just acknowledge it. Yeah, I'll give you, did I give you one last week? I'll send you one.
Okay.
And then sewer policy, I have no intention of you acting on this today. I wanted to give it to you and go over with it, you, you know, together and then you can think on it. There is no hurry to act on this at all per se. The purple highlight at the top is regarding the 50% addition or what we call the one and a half times if the customer fails to schedule an appointment when we indicate that they may have problems with their meter. We send out a letter. Usually that gets a lot of people. Those that don't reply to that letter, we then send out a certified letter. Once they don't reply to that, we give them a bill that has one and a half times the charge on it. Currently, we do not have any policy in place where we refund that. Once it's on, it's on forever. So what I'm proposing here is a change that if a customer receives a bill with this additional charge and they call us before that bill is due and make the appointment and get the thing corrected, sometimes it's just a matter of there was a low battery or whatever the case may be and sometimes the whole meter needs changed out. But if they call, they make the appointment, they get it corrected, that we would have the ability to credit back this charge if we found it reasonable as to why they hadn't attempted to make the repair before that. So long as that credit does not exceed $250,000 and the request is received before the due date.
Did you see $250?
I got budget numbers on my mind.
We keep it down about the same time.
Just 250, just 250.
It went from stark realization, shock, and then my heart skipped a beat.
Sorry about that. Not the passage, just 250. So again, the wording's there, the board can consider that and we don't even need to act until next week if we even act next week, but that would be the change I propose to that policy. Shut offs are a little bit mercury. We've been brainstorming different ideas and to be honest, there really isn't, there isn't an ideal shut off policy. I'm giving you the history there. Prior to June of 2012, the county did not shut off. So you're, never. Your shut off policy is fairly new. Resolution, there was 120110 and then subsequently 130151 amended that, that created the current shut off policy. The policy is that if you have a prior balance and you miss the due date on this bill, we will shut you off. And there's no exceptions. We shut you off and to get back on, you have to pay your balance in full. One of the issues we have is our sewer-only customers don't face that policy at all because we can't shut off sewer. Our water-only customers only have to pay the water due, but our sewer and water customers, the policy is written such that they have to pay all their balance to get their water back on, which sometimes can be a hefty amount because it's sewer and water combined. The benefits to shut offs is that we get, you know, our money more timely and the other benefit, currently if a homeowner would move on us, we cannot certify their balance to the existing property and if they refuse to pay, there's just really nothing we can do. We have to write it off. I will say those incidences are few and far in between. That's really not a concern that looms large in my mind, but that is one of the advantages is that we, they're less likely to go longer periods of time with the balance. The drawbacks to shut offs, the biggest one in our mind is we certify anyways and we can even do mid-year certifications. We have in the past. That is not something we do regularly, but we can. So given the fact that we certify every year anyways, the most anyone is going to owe us is a year's worth of payments. Certification is our primary way of then of ensuring that we get our money. Shut offs help, but they, again, certification is our guarantee and shut offs are far more invasive, you know, on homeowners, et cetera. And then, you know, shut offs, there's no way around it. They cause people to be angry, they yell at my staff, my staff gets upset, you know, it's, it's, it's an unpleasant situation all around, plus the time that's involved just in doing the shut offs. Ken has to go out, turn the valve, the people hurry up and pay, he has to go back, I'll turn it on. You know, it's a little bit of a nuisance. The only additional issue to consider, and it seems like this may be why it started, shut off policies favor landlords in that renters don't get their balances certified. They're inconvenienced by the shut off and then they have to hurry up and pay their bill. Without a shut off policy, the landlords were complaining because everything was certified to taxes, which the owner is responsible for. We have had people try and get us involved in their rental disputes, the owner saying we want them shut off because they're not paying and, you know, in fact, a couple times we've had to go to Denise and say, Denise, you know, we want to be sure what we're saying is correct and that type of thing. So we try and stay out of that issue altogether, so I'm not sure that it should necessarily influence the board, but it is definitely an issue that's out there. My recommendation, based on everything, is that we end our shut off policy, that we rely simply on the certifications. My recommendation would be that we end it. DBFM will track the delinquent accounts and if they begin increasing to alarming amounts because we aren't shutting off, I would come back to the board.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the, probably Jeff came in and was leery of that or thought it had a negative impact on the balances.
My understanding in talking with Joan is that there wasn't a huge decrease in the number of people. We're hoping there's not a huge increase, but again, that's something we can easily track for you, if you would even want to do it. You may want to leave it in place. The other thing that we can do though is if they do become a problem and there's large balances out there, we could do mid-year certifications rather than shut offs. And given that you have to be delinquent on a prior bill and we only bill quarterly, the shut off policy only affects you if you're six months behind anyways. So maybe your certifications would be another way to solve that problem anyway. So I wanted to bring that to board. That's something for you to consider. Again, I'm not expecting decisions today and we can even do discussion next week. You know, there's no hurry to act on this.
I'd like to discuss it just if you did, if we could. Concerning the first section...
The 50%?
Yeah. You have in here that either of you or the director of Water Resources would make a determination and then you put in your providing, it was the first bill the customer received with a 50% charge. The credit does not exceed 250 and the request is received before the due date. What is the credit above, what is the 250, what does that mean?
In other words, if the amount that we're waiving off their bill would not be more than 250. There are, there are accounts where a 50% add-on would exceed that amount typically. Those are commercial accounts. But basically the gist of that is if it's beyond that parameter, it would have to come to the board for approval to waive.
Okay. If you say either the director or of either department, so if either one of you said, let's do this, that would happen?
That's the way it's written, yeah. Typically, all the old policies just said Water Resource Director and so on the financial end started being the DBFM Director getting tucked in as an O R.
Okay, and then we'll be good to add, I keep that in there, but, you know, just because of the involvement of DBFM and anything...
It's money.
And most of these come now, they don't go to Water Resource.
Not to, not to pick one against the other.
Right.
But I wouldn't anticipate that would ever happen.
Concerning the landlords?
Mm-hmm.
They can make it part of their rent agreement.
Absolutely.
So it's not a big burden for them.
Absolutely.
They can just add whatever they have to do.
I agree.
What they do worry about is that someone gets angry, turns the water faucets all on and leaves for a week.
And we've had. We get all sorts of things happening.
To me, that sounds like a criminal intent.
Turning the faucet on is nice. Some people rip out the sink, they leave running pipes. We've heard it all. But you're absolutely right. That's something that they can work in and it's something that we often recommend that, you know, that needs dealt with in your lease, not with us.
What is this on the second?
These are examples, I'm sorry. So then if you look at the attachments, the first page there is where that 50% is in the policy and where I've drawn the arrow is where I'd like to add that language, leaving all the other language intact. This 50% is also, if, the first page, if you look right here, is 5,400, that's your water fund. I'm only proposing we add this language to the water, not the sewers. The water is where we get the residential accounts. Most of the sewer people that are metered are metered because they're heavy users, they're commercial accounts, so I am not proposing that we put that same language into the similar policies that are in Streetsboro Sewer and in Portage County Sewer. So those are the other pages attached there and you'll notice the 5,600 and the 5,200 in those locations and I wrote no change on there. And then the last three pages, the third of the last page is your resolution number 1305, or 0151 that outlines the current shut off policy. That would be what I recommend you rescind. And then the last page is the original policy that does allow for shut offs. And what I'm proposing is we add a sentence to that simply stating that should either the Director of Water Resource or DBFM feel the circumstances warrant a shut off, we would come to the commissioners. And what I envision there is if there's a really unique situation where people aren't paying Pembroke Apartments, and they all worked out, by the way, I was using that as an example, they owed a lot of money, we weren't getting responses from them, that may be an example where it becomes extreme enough, we come to you and say, hey, do you want us to shut them off, you know? But my, my recommendation is that we put the sense in that we come to you for shut offs then. And again, those would be extreme circumstances in my situation. We would do away with the day-to-day shut offs on residential customers.
You know, he has put a lot of thought...
Absolutely.
Would you be willing to go with this today rather than...
There's no reason not to wait.
But it's just something else to be brought up, Kathleen. I think, I think he's put an awful lot of work into this and I agree with everything he said.
I do too.
I do too, but I'd like to read the entire packet and I don't see any reason to, there's no emergency.
No, no, he said it's not an emergency, I just...
And we didn't have it in advance.
I, I think it's very thorough and certainly if Kathleen needs till Tuesday, say, to read it or whatever, digest it or ask questions. I would want us to vote on it, to actually...
So maybe bring it back?
I'm hoping, you know, we'll vote on it.
It can go Tuesday or I can bring it Thursday, either one.
We could do it on Tuesday, you could just be part of our...
Okay, and I can send either a journal or resolution, I'm not sure.
Vicky, you're right, it's very thorough, it addresses...
Yes, that's right, I do have one for you. And I'll email you. And then the last item, we were ready to talk about the APRs today.
Oh, gosh.
I was listening that you, you do want them under me. I kind of assumed that when I saw Denise's email that it would be extra work. I'm okay with going. I would like the board to be aware. There are certain policies that I would like in place, not even for Mr. Allercon per se, but just for our protection in terms of, you know, he brought up, he cleans with bleach water, that's an acceptable standard practice. I would like a policy in the county that says we do that. That way if somebody comes forward and says, hey, you infected my hive, we can say, no, we follow these practices, just for the protection of the county.
I think on the, on the actual inspection guidelines and what his procedures have to be are all part of state law.
The things he inspects are, again, like the cleaning procedure and whatnot, isn't in the revised code. It is in a, he gave us a whole handbook of the APRs guidelines. Again, I, it would be as simple as simply adopting a lot of that as our active policy. Those are all issues though, I think, that can proceed as he's working.
You're going to work with him?
So I'm okay with the board proceeding with an offer letter. Joanne made the recommendation that we include, he'll use his own tools. There are certain safety equipment. He uses disposable gloves in particular that we're going to have to purchase, but those are minimal expenses.
And again, we had some discussion about that, but I would be willing for us to incur the cost of...
Many supplies.
I don't mean outfit, but, you know...
Right, like disposable gloves, he has to wear those because as he goes from hive to hive, he doesn't want to, you know, transfer.
Sure.
Those are type of things I would really recuse. They have a veil and that type of thing. He currently has his own, certainly we could replace that if it's, you know, if it'll wear out.
We talked about possibly adopting a, what would they call, a uniform, some form of a clothing allowance.
I would like him, I'm not sure if he wears the jacket, I don't believe he does. I think he just wears the veil and the disposable gloves. So I would also like to buy him a couple shirts that just say Portage County, similar to what like Dave wears.
Yes.
You know, that just so that he looks, and again, those, those expenses are minimal and those are things, you know, you buy every other year or so, I would assume.
So you're saying he doesn't wear like protective leather jacket?
Well, he has like a long sleeve shirt, but I don't think he wears the full jacket.
He's probably too black.
Well, you know, there are people who don't wear anything. Once you get used to them. Now, if I approached a hive, I would be like in a mood suit. But, you know, some of, some of these beekeepers, they go in, they don't even have the veil on, they don't have gloves, they, you know. I've been watching videos, it's kind of amazing. I mean, the bees themselves, honeybees die when they sting, so they really don't want to sting unless they feel overly threatened. So if you're gentle and you do it at the right times, he pointed out, 85 degrees is where they start getting irritable. You can't do it in rain. I mean, there's, you know, but he knows all that, so there's certain things where you don't approach a hive, you know, if you see those things happening.
This reminds me of when I, when I was a first grade child, our teacher took us to a bee, to a farm where they had bees and I was standing there looking at them and the bee, the man handling the bees took this square thing full of bees and shook it and the bees all fell on me. He did it on purpose. I was terrified.
You're traumatized for life.
And I didn't get stunned.
So the whole time we're talking, your skin's...
I can't imagine that happening today.
Now, yellow jackets, they'll come after you just because you looked at it wrong. Anyway, so I'm okay with proceeding with an offer letter even today. He is coming in later today if the board wanted to.
Concerning the guidelines, I think he has to be licensed by the state.
He does have to attend a meeting in March, which he already did do.
He does not have to be licensed, he's disappointed.
Oh, disappointed, whatever the state guidelines are, we would like to follow and adopt if we have to adopt them locally, whatever.
And that's why I said much of it is simply going to be taking what's already there, both in the state and in this handbook he provided and simply accepting it as our own policy, given that it's acceptable practices in the industry or whatever that term is.
So do we have the letter?
Yeah, I have it drafted. I'm just waiting to hear who he was going to call under, because I know what that name is.
All right, with both groups... I think we should call Dave McIntyre and talk him...
He actually stepped up, he's aware. You're welcome. Yeah, he was going to come in with us and we said they already decided, you know, not to go with you and I told him that was because of Denise's email, which is going to be extra, extra work involved. So we would need a journal entry then maybe that will extend the offer letter to him.
Yeah, by journal entry, except submit the offer letter.
And I believe all the other terms, pay and everything, you guys have already discussed. Is that right?
Yeah. Now, normally the offer letter talks about the probationary period.
Oh, well, that's... Gosh, he's been working for...
Yeah, he's been working for so long, it almost seems...
My recommendation is to include it in there, but, just because we do it with everybody, but it'll pass.
How many days?
It's nine years.
The person policy means it's 120 days.
120.
Well, go ahead, I hope we know, we know.
It's also a call to you for your decision.
Be consistent, sure.
I don't expect any...
Yeah, we're so hard to talk to. It's right. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Oh, they need a DGM, I have to go get my... Oh, yes, could we, could we take just maybe a two-minute break then, just the recess?
Sure.
Yes, yes. Do you want to revisit one of these as to what we decided, tentative we decided?
Okay.
And then we have a...
Well, I think we, we decided to fund Wetham Village, the 2014.
Totally, right, right. Wyndham, yes.
Wyndham, the first one, St. Malo.
Right, right, St. Malo, okay. And then we skipped down to Manaway Township.
Manaway Township Restoration.
They only went 368.
368.
Even though we, yeah, offered more.
But the trustees, now, did they decide or...
They decided not to do that.
Yeah.
They didn't want to clarify.
'Cause that was one of, okay, that was one of the, they wanted the trustees to decide that.
Right, right.
We didn't hear back from Bob Finney, however, concerning the...
Well, didn't he tell us while we were at session that he would take whatever we were giving?
Yeah, okay.
So Coleman were doing twenty-six-seven-thirty-five.
Right, and Bob Finney then would be sixty-three?
The remainder.
Eight-sixty-five?
Lisa said you need to spare five, too.
A what?
Spare me.
In case one of these fell through.
Oh, spare, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying fair, like in fair housing, so we set aside things.
Alterna five.
Yeah, no. Sixty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars is what we've got left over.
How much? That's, no, well, that would go to Bob Finney, I mean, Ravenna.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we would be giving to Ravenna, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars.
Right, okay. And then the one that would be contingency?
Yeah, which one are we going to have as, as I, you know, as Amy said, Lisa said the state likes to have an alternate proposal.
Right, right. Depends on which one falls through, I guess, for the amount of money, yeah.
Right.
We should probably take the most expensive ones, so it don't matter how much money is there.
Which would be Manaway Township Village.
Manaway Village.
Manaway Village would be answering one thing to five.
So this would be the alternate.
Okay.
Is that all right with both of you?
Yes. Manaway Village would be the alternate.
Right, so we've got...
So Ravenna? We can do a journal entry to that.
Yes.
Okay. Wyndham Village, one-twenty-one-four-hundred.
Right.
Manaway Township Trustees Restoration Society, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred. Coleman Professional Services, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Right.
And Ravenna City, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars.
Right.
The alternate being Manaway Village for one-thirty-two-five.
Okay. Journal entry then?
Yes, Lord.
Okay, it's a good deal.
It was easy this year, wasn't it?
Yes. It was easier this year, but I liked last year better.
Good enough. Did you need any of these proposals, Mike, you want them?
I have the overall, but I want to go over the numbers. If anything, you've done this one.
Do you want the pictures and all the...
No.
It's free, honey.
Yeah, we have the, but I just go over the files.
Okay. Good enough. I feel a turkey sandwich with a string of lettuce and Buddha cheese coming out.
There's no public comment, but we know.
Oh, okay.
If there is, we can come back.
Well, I was going to leave, and from there I was gonna go to the courthouse, so...
Oh, you're leaving, yeah. If there's public comment, we can, we'll hear you, to hear and to comment, to listen and, to facilitate public comment. Okay. Now, am I going to go up and get this turkey sandwich, or am I going to see someone's one else?
Okay. Can we resess them?
Yes, sorry.
Are you having to make an executive...
Popper jar says seventy-fifties. I mean, it's not just... Oh, no, and many, many people have given medication through prescriptions, and they get hooked, and then, when the doctor wouldn't prescribe anymore, then they go to the...
Are you okay?
Oh.
Oh, no, yeah.
Are we on?
Oh, we're on.
Gina's gonna indulge me here for a second. The sheet that I have laid out in front of you, the resolution that I brought back to you this morning for Water Resources was a sewer agreement with Omni Brimfield LLC. Well, this morning, they have a new owner.
Oh.
And so Water Resources sent me the corrected one, which is the second page, which is Prestbot Pipe One.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, you know, with the consent agenda, I didn't exactly know how we could switch them, I would rather switch them today before they get permanent...
Oh, absolutely.
Instead of having to do...
Amend.
An amended one, if that's okay with you folks.
May I ask, were they acquired by another company, or is this, this company was...
All I know, all I know from what Water sent to us was, is that the developer changed it, he changed the owner piece of it.
Yeah.
And it came in today, and of course, the agendas were already done, so if we can switch them, it will save having to do another resolution later.
Can we do that, Amy?
Yeah, I think so, sure. We should rescind? No, not rescind.
Can we say replace?
I rescind the previous one, since we already passed it this morning, and do this one.
Do this, okay, however you would like, and here's Amy, you can have this then.
Now, would that have the same, that wouldn't have the same number then, Kathleen?
It could, yeah, we could just add it to this, couldn't we?
Okay, well, I thought if you rescinded it, that number would be one.
The same number, that's a very good question.
Or do you wanna just make a...
Can't we replace it?
Why don't we do, make a motion to...
Or change.
Or change the name?
Change the name.
Change the name from, on this particular resolution, from what we had before to Omni Brimfield LLC.
Right.
Why don't we do that?
And does Amy have a copy?
I just gave away.
Okay.
Thanks, Danielle.
So can we...
A motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that we, that we do that.
Second?
Okay, for the discussion. That's called.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sookie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon, Gina.
Good afternoon.
I'm fine, thanks, and yourself?
Oh, just another day in paradise.
Aye, he's living the dream, not worried.
Oh, you're living the dream.
When you say paradise, kinda slower, it becomes pair of dice. It's just a crapshoot we're gonna get into.
Understood.
That's a good attitude.
So, I'm almost, just asking, how is it going, you know? It has its moments, right?
Always does, always does.
Do we need to go into executive session about anything, or, I mean, I don't know?
You know, I'm...
I think we kinda do, probably.
Thinking we do, we do, I believe we want to be very...
Candid.
Open and candid about.
I appreciate that, I have some issues I think are employee-related that...
All right, so they are, again, justification.
Make a motion to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion to motion or compensation of a public employer official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
Second?
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sookie?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay. Much like it?
A motion to exit the executive committee.
Second?
We'll call.
Second?
Yes.
Yes, it's session.
Maureen?
Yes.
Do you have an action?
Uh, no.
We're just happy.
I mean...
We're just happy.
Yeah.
I'll give you a color copy if you want.
Okay, sure.
Oh, thank you.
I'll try to be as quick as possible.
I think we have it black and white.
I heard that, but I'd like to give you the color, since I made them for you, and my wife complimented me on the colors I chose, so...
It's very nice. Those are my campaign.
Were they?
Yes.
Wow, very good, very good. I won't keep you too long, I really do appreciate the opportunity to present an idea in front of the Commissioners of Portage County. Bless you. And, you know, I'm sure that anyone that just requested meeting gets one, but again, I appreciate the time. Okay. So, my name's Andrew Cashman, and I've been, I've been kind of thinking about an idea on my own, you know, for about two years. It kinda came up when I was volunteering for an organization that helps veterans, helps promote the value of veterans to employers. And, but I'd like to make clear, in this, in this program, which I've named Sit Up for now, Citizen Upstanding is what it is, is the mission statement, which is on the second page, and it's really what this is for, and I believe it would be for a county-type of government or some sort of governmental program, is what it could be for. And I'm gonna read that real quick and give you some disclaimers after them. "I think the mission is to improve population and good citizenship without gentrification in depressed yet solid communities by providing valued incentive for specific groups across the country to relocate." So let me disclaim this real fast. My feeling is that in depressed areas, that a solution would be more population, because there's, sometimes there's a flight that exists in depressed areas. If that's, you know, and that's my own theory, but it's something that I've thought. If that's not the case in Portage County, then I'm in the wrong spot, and I get that. But I don't know too much about Portage County, except for some recent experience. I'm from, I grew up in Cuyahoga and currently live in Lake. I'm looking to move, and I've recently looked at a property in Wyndham. I think that would be a good example of a place that could use some new population.
But we need jobs, that's what brings in people.
That's great, that's a great point, and I'd like to come around to that eventually with some secondary items. So my other disclaimer is, I'm not a salesman, and I have no expectations from today. Today is just an opportunity for me to let some important people hear an idea, and that's it. If you have some suggestions and some opinion, I'd love to hear it, but there's nothing that needs to be done, other than I appreciate your time, okay? Currently, the involvement would be a program, the Sit Up program, which I love the name, by the way, Sit Up, right? It's, it's kind of, it's an action, right? It's a posture.
Sit Up, take notice.
Right. I do have, I do have a feeling that we would have investors needed, and I'll get into that, local contractors and the new citizens. And I'll explain why I think the groups that I've identified are valuable, and how there might be others I hadn't even thought of yet. So the big idea is this, we're going to use government assets to insight value. I'm looking for housing that can be provided to the program within twenty thousand dollars of rehab, and we would take a group of people and market the ability to live at a very affordable cost. The costs, we'll get into when we get into the investor section, but it's very low cost where you can own a home within five years. While also getting other, gaining other lifestyle perks, which might be some benefits around the country within businesses and/or government, other government programs. Savvy investors front the rehab costs, and they're paid back with interest. Local contractors rehab the homes, and then you have a new citizen relocate, hopefully exemplifying some of the traits which were the reasons why you brought them in in the first place. You might be looking for someone who has shown good citizenship before, and if they were to do that, the idea is that that type of new citizenship, volunteering, you know, involved with the community, would spread to your current population. If you were to have a program within the county government or any other type of local government, you'd have a lot to do, and I've got several bullet points here, and that probably wouldn't even touch the surface. You'd coordinate the inspections and choose available housing. To be honest with you, I'm very transparent, I don't know what type of available housing Portage has, I'm making some assumptions that there might be a land bank that would reutilization-type program that you have, right? Market and coordinate with investors, you'd handle funds, market to potential citizens, have ideas as to how to do that with each group. Assess applications, this would be a privilege, I believe, for someone to want to come here, and I think there's incentive for that. Coordinate with rehab, with local contractors, and new involvement with citizens, you might, you might host functions for the new citizens and things like that. And grow and improve the program by developing new ideas and agenda, and we're gonna get into employment with new ideas and agenda for a program, too, okay? The investors would invest an initial twenty thousand per home. A portion of the new citizen payment at five years would be five hundred a month, too, that would go back to the investor, which would be at least thirty thousand dollars for five years, if not more, if we associated some of the interest gained back into that for the investor, to make that a little bit more of an incentive for an investor to actually take part. If they're local investors, maybe there's other incentives that you can throw in their local tax payments, things like that. Local contractors, you know, I didn't put as much thought into this, but of course, you would vet them, and also use them as part of the inspection process in order to choose which housing would fit. And then here's the new citizens. I've got two groups that I've identified, and one of them is gonna sound familiar, as I told you, I was involved with a veterans group already. This isn't just veterans, this is out-processing military. I was also in the military now a long time ago, some of my compadres that are still in the military, getting ready to retire, which makes me feel a little old, but that's okay, all right? Or I should've stayed in, I could've been retiring by now. It's very scary for them, I can attest to this, personally and by speaking with them in the current day and age, it's a very different thinking about coming out and transitioning into civilian life. I believe, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but I believe this is a very good group to incentivize, to come to an area in order to do some revitalization. There's other criteria that you would use for these groups, the other group was aspiring retirees, someone who's ready to retire and maybe can't for other reasons, but could because of this, because of this program, because of the affordability of the program. The criteria I would think about is, instead of looking at the negatives when trying to filter through, filter through who would be the best, you would focus on the positives. So instead of saying, hey, as a government agency, I wouldn't want to discriminate, you would, and look at the negatives, you would look at the positives. What type of person, you know, are you the type of person that volunteers and that has done things for the community you're in, whether that's a civilian community or a military community? Okay, why, why out-processing military members? I am biased, I think that as a pool of people, that they are, they have a natural sense of service, but like any other pool of people that, with a large amount, you're gonna have all sorts of different backgrounds, a diverse background is a good thing, diverse skills, you are bringing some skills into the area. They are seeking civilian opportunities, that's the thing, and they're used to relocating. They've been kind of shoved about the country without, you know, without having that much say in it for the last ten, twenty years, depending on what you're thinking. And then the last part is possible pension. At first, you might want to use the grading scale to say, who should we bring in as military members that have had more tenure, so that the availability of jobs might not be as necessary if they can live at the rate that we're looking at. And I would say that the same with aspiring retirees, you might even be able to skip the investor step, if a retiree is able to say, hey, I can front the twenty thousand dollars, and then, and be able to retire at the rate that I would like to. They also have diverse life experience, and in this north-eastern area, we have good medical resources also. What can be added later? Not only is this, what I really like about this is it's grabbing population from not around the area, it could grab population from anywhere. Let's steal some people from Florida, you know, there's too many of us moving there, right? Let's steal some people that originally from Florida or from any other areas, or stationed in Cheyenne, Wyoming, like I was. And so not only would we have that, but you could add later where you would give the availability to partner with a local family and/or group that says, hey, I'd like to take part in this, too, and you'd kind of partner the two. And you're getting a little bit like Habitat for Humanity when you do that, but that's, but it's also a value, it's a value-to-value gain. You can coordinate other perks, you have a great college in the county, and maybe they would associate with this program, and... You can coordinate other perks, you have a great college in, in the county, and maybe they would associate with this program and, and throw some perks that way. Community centers, other membership, even, even, even businesses might want to add to it. Family programs, or school mentoring, and things like that, we could add to the program later. And then employment placement, to be honest with you, Commissioner Klein, this was my first idea, because that's what I came from, was a volunteer organization that was promoting to employers. It, it's tough, I know, I think the value in the, in the person, in the citizen, would be the same for, for an employer. So if we were to add a placement program to where we, to where we said, hey, local employers, here's a good pool of people that, that would be employable, for the same reasons they would be good citizens. I think if you're able to do that at some level, I think jobs would be good jobs, and, and, you know, that, that we could have something with that. And then the same idea of five-year contracts. And then why the county government? Again, at first, when I, when I didn't know a lot, and I still don't know a lot, I will be transparent again, I, I thought maybe this would be a city-type thing, and then I started looking into it, so I think the county with the land bank assets, reutilizations would be better. You have legal opportunities, there's a lot of legal questions, I believe, in this, and, and a lot of information gathering to be done. And, and it might be more than one area of need, maybe the city of Ravenna in certain parts needs this, and so does Wyndham, and, and maybe you can help me with a couple of other places where it might work. In conclusion, and, and I'd love to talk about any questions or comments you have after this, it's, the best point that I, you know, I'm very biased again, that I, that I can say, is that it's a worthy cause to question, it's a worthy cause to research, it's a worthy cause to develop, because there's value for all entities involved. If you think about it, even if you brought employers in, there would be value for the employers. There's value for the government when you're bringing in new tax revenue and population, there's value to the investors as they're, they're gaining that back, and there's value to the new citizen, because you're bringing them in to a solid community, and they're helping with that.
I think the content of which you presented, this is very interesting, I want, in retrospect, I want to ask you, what is it that you expect, that you are asking Commissioners to do?
I am, I'm asking nothing, other than for you to listen. If you were to have, rather, either now or later, to have said, I think this is something that I'd like to look into more, and, and use it as a county program, then I would want to, I would want to be involved in, in talking about that. If you don't think that, then it was just your time that, that I was asking for, and then that's it.
There are, there's a similar program, I believe it's with PMHA, the Fortage Metropolitan Housing Authority, where, and that may be a good group to talk to, or at least talk to the director, because they have a program whereby people move in and pay a small amount of rent, and then gradually become homeowners after a number of years.
Okay. These are local?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you'd also want to talk with Neighborhood Development Services, which is on Main Street here in Ravenna. They run a number of programs that assist the eligible population in home ownership, assistance with mortgage payments, perhaps, you know, what you're saying about veterans. I, I think maybe, I'm not sure if they have a specific program to assist veterans, but I know, you know, they would always be interested in, in proper hearing about some specifics.
Okay.
David Vaughn is the director of Neighborhood Development Services. In addition to that, they, and Vicky can talk to this, the land bank is, not administrated, but it's...
Yeah, it is.
It's administered, yeah. So...
He administers the land bank, David Vaughn.
He administers it, yeah, so that may be, you know, you mentioned land bank.
And then, another connection is, when we listen to those people who are involved with the Fortage Development Corporation, there are jobs available here, and they have hard time finding good employees. So like if we were making incentive for housing for veterans that are leading the service, they would be good employees, I would think.
I agree.
And, so there may be a connection there, and the director of the Fortage Development Board might be someone that you would want to talk to as well.
Fortage Development Board, is that, is that Bradford?
Yeah, Brad, yeah.
Okay, I have, I have, and to be honest with you, it was too late, because it was only the other day, I was going to, I was going to see if you wanted to.
The connection would be that we have corporations that are looking for employees to the point where they don't want other companies coming in, because that then is reducing their chances of getting good employees. So it sounds like it would be a good connection.
Okay, and these are government agencies that you're referring me to?
NDS is not government.
Neither, yeah.
Five oh one C three.
Okay, that is a nonprofit?
And also the Fortage Development Board is nonprofit.
Right. Metropolitan Housing, is that a government entity?
It is, yeah. What about Mark for His Own, he might be a good one to talk to as well. He's had a family and community service, he's very knowledgeable about programs.
Family and...
Community service. His name is Mark for His Own.
Do you see this as, when you're, when you're saying the Neighborhood Development Services and the PMHA, and you're saying they're nonprofit, that, that surprised me a little bit, it, it sounds like it's a...
Well, PMHA is a government...
NDS is, it's, that's not a nonprofit.
Oh, it's not? Oh, I thought it was a...
Okay.
Maybe quasi.
Yeah, maybe quasi.
Quasi-government, okay, funded by tax.
Well, NDS isn't funded by taxes. They have access, or they, they bring in a lot of federal money, or state money, but...
They administer it, they're the administrator.
You're right, administrator, administrative money off of that, so.
So looking at it again, and again, this is not a veterans', this is not a veterans' program, it's, it's a program that, that is using veterans as a, as an asset to, to gain its initiative. But looking at the initiative of gaining more population, is that, is that something that Portage County would be, you know, is that, is that a need?
Well, it depends, but when I, when I hear you say that, yes, we need increased population to fill the jobs that we have, but we want people who are eager to work and have the skills. One of the issues that we have in Fortage County is we have a very large population of very low-income people, who really don't have the skills or the ability to, you know, be employed. So it's a real burden on the welfare system. But yes, and the reason I mention veterans, because you use it as an example, but also because they're young when they retire, to start with, and they usually want a second career, and so they'd be a good pool of working people.
I agree, I totally agree, that's why I chose them as, as, as a group to focus on.
What, what frustrates me just a little, when I'm trying to get a handle on this, is how it fits in with, I mean, we have so many silos of, of different organizations, how it would fit in, so that there could be, this could become part of, of an institutional program that's already in place. And that's why I thought about PMHA.
That would be convenient, sure, and, and I think I should, I should do that exactly, you said.
Yeah, because PMHA already has a program very similar to this, and I think they get federal funding for it.
And I'm sorry, I, as you said, talked to the director at PMHA, but I didn't write down the name.
I don't, I don't know his name.
Okay, I can find that, easy enough.
There was a recent change, I think, in that, yeah, but, but talking to the people that we've mentioned will give you a lot more insight as to whom they might suggest people as well.
Okay.
I, I see this as being really an important service to provide. I think it would help the economy, because I know we have factories that are looking for good employees. But it's hard to figure out how it would fit in, and I'm sure by talking to the people that we've mentioned, there may be a place where that would fit.
You think it'd fit in, in Portage County also, that's another thing, I actually, to, to give you some backstory, I, I, I sent the same cold inquiry to five counties, and you guys, to your credit, were the first, so I appreciate that. And, and I don't want to generalize too much, but I think it's because it's a, women in leadership, they like new ideas better than men in leadership. My compliments to you on that, but I, I did, I wasn't sure about Portage County as much as, as I might have about some...
No, if you think of a place like Cleveland, inner city, there's all kinds of empty houses that would be available for development, I'm sure many fitting the criterion that you have, 20,000 or less. But the problem there, you have to have a connection to jobs, and the problem there would be, there wouldn't be the kind of jobs available.
Okay.
You might be able to bring people in, they have affordable housing, but if they don't have a job, they can't stay.
And you think, and you're saying Fortage County has more of that opportunity for that?
I think Fortage County has a need for good employees.
Okay.
So, the housing incentive may bring people here to fill those jobs. We have employees that are begging for employee, employers that are begging for good employees. And they can't fill them, because those people who are traditionally welfare recipients, many of them are elderly, or have mental illness, or disability of some kind, or have the cultural background whereby they don't have the working skills necessary. So we have a real need for good employees, and so I can see that might be an incentive to, to bring people that are looking for, you know, well-skilled people.
And that's good to hear, I would, I would imagine, to be honest with you, that the problem would be opposite, but I'm thinking more of a Cuyahoga County issue, and, and so that's good to know.
Where there's high unemployment.
Right, right. Well, I appreciate your time, are there any other questions for me?
No, it's, it's, I, I'm really curious as to how you got involved in this.
I'm, I consider myself an idea guy, and my background is background checks, I, I've worked since the, since I got out of the military, I was a paramopoliceman for a short time, and I always, I always would like to work in something community-related, and unfortunately, that didn't work out as well as I thought it might. And, and so I've, I've done background checks, I've been in operations, I'm not a sales guy.
So you're, you're self-employed?
I, I am not, I, I currently work for a company that, that performs background checks for employment purposes, and, and funny you ask, they, they gave me a reduction notice because they were purchased, and so that's part of the motivation I had. I said, you know what, if I were ever to want to get involved in anything, and again, I have no expectations of this, I'm just, I'm just taking a plunge, is what I'm doing, I'm saying, I'd like to at least spread what I feel is a good idea out to as many people that I can, and then people that might have some, some good feedback for me, which you've provided.
Many terrific programs start up with someone with a great idea.
Yeah, well, I hope it is one, because I, I do believe in it very much. I'd like to notice one thing about the, the front page there, you know, I have two upward arrows, and if you put a little door and a couple of windows on those arrows, what does that look like?
Like a home.
Little home, right, and, and I think those are the two things that are going together, I think homeownership is still what can drive good citizenship, so. I appreciate your time, is this the end of your day?
No, we still have some things.
Oh, that's too bad, I'm sorry, well, I hope you have a good day, and again, I appreciate the time. I can, I have, on the back page of that presentation, I have my contact information. And again, I appreciate your time, and I, I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Are we on? We need to do a journal entry to Jean Robert's request, to extend the time that the water resource staff that are using community of the city, an extension of the time for that.
Until we do that for Jean with a recommendation, right?
He said June 16th, but you can order it however you want, you know.
He has her post with Jean.
Do you have a resolution to change?
Yeah, we did that.
Okay.
So we just need to do journal entries now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion that we approve the journal entries for today.
My second?
And for the discussion, the sure journal entries, that's not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. Is there anything else?
Well, I have, actually, my review, we just want to do it, but you don't have to.
Oh, no, we're going to do it.
Sure.
Are we, isn't that the one we do before we see you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, you can adjourn if you want.
Yeah.
And make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
We'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yes, true. We adjourn.